Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Should be paying more than that.
Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this nation as our heritage, we pray that we may always be grateful that we've been so blessed. Give the Spirit of wisdom to all those who have been granted the privilege to serve in this city and public service. May we serve faithfully for the well-being of all people. Amen.
Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge? Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Holbrooke, the roll, please.
Carrie Hogg, Ward 1. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tomsmeyer, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Tafferyn, Ward 6.
Thank you, Mayor. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from June 15th. The council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If you will please make any additions or deletions or corrections if they're necessary, if not, a motion's in order.
Could I have a clarification? Just once and for all, real short, on these Eddie Lee Wilkins contract. Is that saying that this contract is renewed for next year for one month? How was that stipulated?
The way that it was stipulated is since we're on a fiscal year that runs from July 1st to June 30th, what council decided to do was to approve $9,000 in this fiscal year specifically for the Eddie Lee Wilkins Youth Association, which pays for the July because their camp runs June and July.
Gets it through this summer.
And then we also set aside $9,000 for a youth program in June of next year.
Right.
Which may, depending on whether or not their paperwork is in order, if they have whatever, but we have the discretion to contract with them, to continue with them, or we also have the discretion to contract with somebody else if that's the case.
That's what I wanted to get to there right there.
Yes, sir.
So, this contract is as is, but next fiscal year will be a $9,000 contract for a program to be named.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that...
Mm-hmm.
They're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. I make a motion to approve the minutes. That's pronounced.
Second.
Do you have any other discussion? You good?
I'm feeling good.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have grant application for L-Meg, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a grant for $252,542.90. And it's for the fiscal year 2018 L-Meg. As you said, it does require a 30% match, which will come from the 2014 SPOSS. And we're seeking approval for the mayor to sign a cover letter, the grant application, and all associated documents.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Mayor, just one. Have we always had to pay 30%?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
We've been bad.
That's just since the T-SPOSS vote.
When the T-SPOSS failed, the people that passed the T-SPOSS have to pay a 10% match. The areas that failed the T-SPOSS have to pay a 30% match.
Nothing we did locally, that was by region.
Yes.
Just as a point of clarification. Any other discussion?
You will at some point bring us the contract back for this. That's probably not... Is that yet this year? Will you do that this year or wait until next spring?
For resurfacing?
Yeah.
Yes, once we get the money, we'll let a contract for the resurfacing. And contractors really covered up with work right now, so it'll probably be like this past year where we'll probably get the money in September, and then we'll let the contract, and the contractor will probably wait till next spring to...
Got to let it get hot to go down the road.
Right, yeah, it does have to be 55 and rising to do this type of resurfacing, so due to weather and their schedules, we'll be lucky to get paid by next spring.
Just curious, thank you.
And just because people want to ask, you will be determined... You have a scoring system? You'll determine what roads are to be resurfaced based on that?
Yes, those roads have been determined, and we included that list. If you want me to, I'll read those.
All right.
Okay, there's 10 streets that are in your package that have been determined based on a score. We rate the roads for deficiencies and pick the roads that have the most deficiencies, so these roads are in pretty bad shape.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or discussion? We did have a motion in a second already, right? All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Tommy, next item, please.
Thank you, sir. This is the first reading of a ordinance to revise the erosion and sediment control ordinance that is in our development regulations. You just revised this in... Well, you adopted the model ordinance in November of 2016, and it had a couple of mistakes that were passed through to us from the EPD. And they recognized those mistakes and have asked us to update the revised ordinance by the end of July. It's too simple. The one thing is they got their own website address wrong, and it corrects that. And then there's one definition that they would like modified, and that's the definition for final stabilization. So it's two very minor changes.
Okay.
And this is the first reading.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Sanders at this point? And again, as he stated, this is the first reading, so we'll take this up for final consideration at our meeting on July 20th. Next item, please.
Thank you.
No, you don't have the next one. Mr. Archer, you have the next one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tommy. Whenever you're ready.
What item is it?
The typo.
I know, but you're supposed to play that, and then I respond.
You have told me several times that I'm the man. So you need to go ahead and just read whatever you're supposed to read about the nuisance ordinance revision.
In your...
Where's Keith Goble, by the way?
In your agenda package, under paragraph 2, there's an amendment to section 5-6 of the nuisance ordinance under the animal chapter. Frankly, we noticed a typo in that, and the only thing this amendment does is correct the typo. The word incorporated is substituted for the word unincorporated.
Okay. Thank you for your eloquence.
Can I just ask that?
And your brevity, too.
Entertaining question, so to speak. Do y'all just read the ordinances occasionally, or how would you find that out? Like, how did...
Actually, my brother called me because somebody sent him a letter from a lawyer complaining about his dog barking in his backyard. And he asked me what the law was on dogs barking in people's backyards. And I pulled the ordinance and read it, and it said that on any property located within the unincorporated limits of the city of Cardiff. I said, "Wait a minute, that can't be right." So we changed it.
So there could be others out there.
And my brother's dog is still barking.
Yeah, there probably are.
Thank you.
Was that more than you wanted to hear?
No, that's exactly what I expected.
Detention pond fencing, Mr. Grove.
Yeah, not nearly as entertaining. This is... Unfortunately, y'all discussed this last meeting, but you didn't read it, so this is the first reading on this. And I think we've got what you wanted, which is a hybrid reduction of the fence height from 6 to 4 feet, which was okay with staff. And then depending upon the slope of the detention facility, they could either put the fence in or pull it all together. Just as a complete aside, too, I know I've been a little bit vocal on this, but if you want to see examples of how these can be done, go take a look at the Public Safety Building and the detention that we got there. It really hits the mark. Not that we expect everybody to do it, I understand, because it's going to take more property, but that's kind of my interest in this. Anyway, I think we got what council wanted in terms of the hybrid. I think I copied y'all an email from Carrie, whose implication, who said that she supported that.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions of staff at this time on this item?
Mayor, just one.
Okay.
And I'm not sure who it goes to, but at one time we discussed regional detention ponds, and I'm not sure we're doing that.
Well, there are some of those.
As much as any.
Arthur? I mean, at one time, I thought we had people pay money into a fund where we'd create them.
Yes, we did, but we never... We used that money for stormwater improvement projects because we really couldn't... With our terrain, it was hard to identify a regional... A pond that would have an actual regional impact instead of a very localized impact. So that's more suited really for flatter areas where... That are... You know, most of our drainage basins are pretty small, and so we don't do that anymore. That was a very short-lived idea that we collected some monies and we spent those monies on improvement projects, but we never really did a regional detention project.
I was just thinking we'd cut down maybe on the detention ponds if we... But if it doesn't work here.
Well, I would guess the EPD would probably have more to say on whether or not they'd allowed those. I would think with the regulations that are constantly being tightened, a regional detention pond would be almost impossible.
Right, it is hard in this area because the... You know, if you take money from the business over here, the drainage basins are usually so small because we have a hilly area that it's hard to do regional detention in that basin where you took the money from, in lieu of. And so if you spend it over in this other basin, it's not really... You haven't really done anything about this basin, so we just decided that it was not really...
David would tell you, you can't do what you're talking about.
Right, we decided it wasn't really a good idea, so we quit that practice of accepting money in lieu of detention and just require all developers to do their own detention and do the stormwater quality far their side.
May I just add one other question? When you go to conferences and everything, Tommy, do you ever hear about incentives given for water features that would make a detention pond attractive to the community? Are there cities that give incentives for that?
Well, you know, there's cities that have low-impact development regulations.
LID development is really... LID regulations are really popular, especially in Florida. You see a lot of that, and that's one reason why you don't see a lot of fences around the detention there because... But low-impact development does take up more room, and it costs the developers more money upfront. It's better, you know, there's, you know, environmental gains to be had, but it is... It does cost more. So yes, and we have some incentives now. We've got stormwater credits that are available. You get a lower stormwater fee if you incorporate certain things, but I think what you're talking about is probably low-impact development regulations, which we do not have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or discussion? Again, first reading, we'll take that up for final vote at our meeting on July 20th. Mr. Grove, you have the next item regarding...
This is a write-in entry that's been requested by the developer of the property that the school sold to the active-living senior property next to Sam Smith Park and the schools. Greg is taking a look at it, and it's okay with him, but they do need it to do some work up there.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Riggs, you have the next two, please, sir.
Yes, Mayor, the first one is the environmental assessment of our route for our line with Transco from the meter station to where we tie into our system. And it's $6,750. We recommend approval.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Mr. Riggs?
The next one is on the actual site where the interconnect will be, we're required by Transco to do a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, and that's what this is for, and it's a total of $2,500.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Carrie. Ms. Reed, next item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for a public hearing in advance of bringing you guys the ordinance for the creation of a business improvement district, which you'll see at the next council meeting. At this point, this is mandated by state law for us to have a public hearing. We do have to renew the business improvement district periodically. The last renewal was 10 years ago. This renewal, we are looking at moving forward with five years. We do have a majority of approval from our property owners downtown to implement this.
Very good. Thank you. So at this point, a public hearing for the creation of the business improvement district and give anybody the opportunity to like to speak for or against to do so at this And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And as Ms. Reed said, we'll see that on a future agenda. Mr. Osobroch, you've got the next few items, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Electric Cities awarded an equipment inspection and maintenance contract to Southeast Woodpole Inspectors, and we need for them to do work for us, and we're recommending... We'd like to recommend that council approve signing a two-year contract and the contract not to exceed $30,000 per year. And this is a budgeted item, and Keith has looked at the contracts.
Any discussion on this item? Not a motion is in order.
So move.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
The next item is something we come before council every year. It's a contract to renew our MV90 system, which is a system to gather data and billing from our larger customers. And we have grown over the last few years and had to put larger meters... Both floor would be an example. There's four meters at both floors, so we've exceeded our existing contract, which was up to 50 meters. So there's a... The next block is 51 to 100 meters that we can use this license for. And so we're asking council approve this new agreement for the support of 51 to 100 meters, and also the annual service agreement is $17,640. And this is a budgeted item also.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, Don.
Okay. It's time to renew our tree trimming and roadway clearing contract, and Electric Cities bids this out, and the folks, Trees Unlimited, won the contract again. That's the people that's been doing our work for the last eight years. And so we're asking that we continue with Trees Unlimited, and we budgeted $98,900 in fiscal year 2017-18 for this work.
I have a question. Do we pay them hourly or by the job?
It's by the hour.
We already had that discussion.
Everything's rolled into...
Meanwhile, there were complaints that many people were worried that they were getting paid by the hour and not doing what they should, so Don's watching for us.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion or questions on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to take Mr. Cooley's motion. Would you like to second that?
I would be happy to.
Outstanding. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Sir, Mayor and Council. This is a bid 17005, and this is for concrete forming and finishing for the Dillinger Park softball fields 4, 5, and 6. And this is a labor-only. This is with us furnishing the... Paying the concrete in aggregate. I recommend a low bid from Skene Concrete for the amount of $14,000. And I would like to say, as I mentioned in the work session, all the city departments are helping with our bond projects, and it really enables us to stretch our dollars and hopefully do more projects, and I do appreciate what all of them have done for this. Anyway, I recommend a low bid from Skene Concrete.
You're going to need them again, though.
I need them all.
They better be nice, too.
You know, they all hate to see me. Every time I walk by now, they all duck their head away now.
Those buildings look great, man.
All right, questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Sir, Mayor, our competition floor for our gymnastics center, the carpet is starting to show its age. It needs to be repaired. The Cartersville Twister Booster Club has made a donation for this for the city, and I recommend we purchase the carpet from the equipment guy in the amount of $7,110, not to exceed that amount.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Chief Carter, you have the next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you tonight a budgeted item from our 17-18 budget. This is for a new fire truck. This is to replace a 1996 Pierce that we have currently. It's in the fleet. Ms. Rebecca? Just a little bit of the history on the fire trucks. When we purchased the fire truck, we're looking at a 20-year lifespan. We do 10 years first out, running emergency, and then 10 years in the reserve. As I said, the 1996, it's exceeded its lifespan, going on to 21 years, and that's what brings us here tonight. We have gone off the same platform where we ordered the last trucks in 2013. Those models have been very successful for us, so we're maintaining that particular design on the new ones that we're going with this year. And this truck has met all the construction criteria that we worked with through the shop, maintaining a Detroit engine that works very successful for us. The garage here is tooled up to be able to handle our trucks, so this has allowed us to be a little bit more efficient. And also, we have been able to send them for some specialized training, which has helped us with this particular model. Ms. Rebecca? The contract for the particular truck that we're looking at is now $509,420. Now, this is slightly actually 10% higher than what we paid in 2013. But in 2013, we also received an additional discount because we bought multiple units at that time, and we have had an increase of approximately 2% per year on the cost. And we have gone and made sure that this is still market comparable. This is bidded through the Florida Fire... Excuse me, the Florida Sheriff's Association, so therefore we're maintaining a competitive bid. We'll be purchasing off of that. We have a contract that Mr. Lovell has reviewed. There were three changes within that contract that he had asked for. We have made sure that that was taken care of. But one final thing that we need to consider is that if we prepay for this truck at the time of the order, we're going to be able to save an additional $23,577. That would also bring the cost of this truck down now to $485,843. There is an 11-month construction timeframe. This is why we're coming to you so early with the budget, in order to make sure that we receive this truck within the same fiscal year, so that the money will wash out once lease pool is paid when we receive this particular truck. We just respectfully request your approval on the new truck, and I stand ready for any questions you may have.
Did you mention it, or did I ask, the 96 truck? What do we do, sell that?
We will surplus that truck out. We did look at the option of actually surplusing it now and doing it as a trade-in, but the value that they were offering was pretty low, so we feel very comfortable. We'll be able to exceed that on the open market, selling that truck off a year from now.
What do you guess you get for it?
They offered us five, but we could double that.
Five thousand?
Hmm. Now, one final comment. This does include a basic equipment under the NFPA 1901 specs, because I don't want you to be in the spring, just as we've done in the past. We will come back to you in the spring for the additional equipment that is on this truck, but as of right now, we are under budget with this project.
I'll give you six right now.
Sir?
I'll give you six for it right now. You're going to sell it to Randy Thompson?
Oh. Well, actually, we've got one municipality, if y'all remember, a year or so ago, y'all helped out. They're extremely interested in this truck. This is better than anything that they've got on their feet.
Good.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
You say 20 years, chief. Is that regardless of mileage? In other words, you go in years?
Yes, ma'am. NFPA tells us that any truck greater than 25 years, we're supposed to take it off the road. That's irregardless of mileage or anything else. Now, we take good care of our equipment, so technically, you could get more than 20 to 25 years out of the trucks. You know, there's no denying that. But then again, we're also opened up to a lot of other issues if we tend to have an incident with it.
So any repairs are done at our garage?
Yes, ma'am. They are, except for some extremely extensive repairs that we would have to bring in. But primarily, that's with our aerial, because it tends to be a little bit more technical. But we have been able through to get the... Our local shop, they've been certified on several different components with this particular model truck, so therefore, we do not have to use that third-party vendor to make the repairs as much.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Lease pool.
Lease pool.
This is lease pool purchase?
Okay, can we go ahead and amend that motion to say it's part of lease pool?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve the purchase of this fire truck through lease pool.
Your second still good?
That was tracked with me.
Everybody still good? Okay. Thank you.
Dave? I woke up.
Thank you, chief. Yes, sorry to disturb your slumber over there. Mr. Manino, next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're in need to purchase a new full-size planner and scanner to reproduce, distribute, and store full-size construction drawings. Our current Xerox product... Xerox no longer makes the full-size scanner and printer, so we have looked at an HP. The low price we got was from Repro Products. Repro Products for $13,498, and we recommend that y'all consider us... Allow us to purchase this product, and it's far less than the cost of a fire truck.
It's not going to do us any good if there's a house on fire. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Randy. Bob, you've got the next couple.
Good evening, everyone. First up, it's our Felton Road water line. As you're aware, we've been moving some lines around out of DOT's way in this area where they've been doing some road improvements for several years now. This is a similarly motivated project. It's going to be right at the intersection of Tennessee and Felton, right near the Crown Inn. As we stated in the work session, we'll need to move about 340 feet of 8-inch water main. We'll be adding two complete fire hydrant assemblies, a mainline valve, and some other miscellaneous equipment. We took bids for the work, and the low bid came from CAM Contracting in the amount of $54,965.
And I should have asked this in the work session. Any disruption in service when this is happening, or as you put the new pipe in place and switch over?
There will be minimal disruption. There is that switch over time, but yeah, we will build the new line, get that completely ready to go into service, and then there will be a changeover period. We typically coordinate that with the businesses. And in this area, there will only be a few customers that will be affected.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve lobby.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item for you, Bob.
Yes, Sir. Next up is our annual manhole rehab. This is a program more than a project. It's something that we have been doing for years. We are just finishing up the allocation from our previous fiscal year and would like to ask your approval for a change order with that contractor to allow them to continue working on these interceptor manholes that we are working on currently. I would ask for an authorization not to exceed $75,000 to continue this work. As you're aware, we've discussed, I think, several times, the I&amp;I problem, basically the water leaking into sewers is an issue that we really need to tackle for several reasons. The obvious reason is that what causes sewers to surcharge and to run over. But it also shows up at the wastewater plant. We don't get paid for treating that water, but we do incur pumping and chemical costs because of that volume. So we feel like making this investment annually to get our sewers tighter has multiple benefits, both in the street where the surcharges take place and at the plant where we are seeing rather large volumes of water when we have bigger rain events like we did today.
You had a good one today.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for discussion? A reminder that motion should include a not-to-exceed of $75,000.
And this fast legal muster, because Keith reviewed it and said that the original costs were competitively bid, so he was comfortable with that.
If there's no questions, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve manhole rehabilitation not to exceed $75,000.
I'll second that.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Bob, we have two items to add. Chair will entertain a motion to add those two items.
So move.
Thank you. Anybody want to second those?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adding those two items, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Very good. We've got two items added. Mr. Riggs, you've got the first of those two items, if you'll come on forward.
Yes, Mayor. Public Service Commission is trying to finish up the countywide safety plans, and they want Barto and Floyd filed by next Friday, the 14th. So we're asking you to approve the plan's contingent on the approval of the gas department, the city manager, and the city attorney.
Thank you very much. And a motion should include that stipulation if someone is inclined to give that motion.
Motion to approve the plan based upon the approval of the city manager, the attorney, and the gas department. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Grove?
Yes. I preferred to have done this administratively, but David says that I need you all to approve it. So what we're going to do, and what I'm going to ask you to do, is go ahead and formalize the relationship that Tamara Brock has with utilities and point her into another assistant city manager's position. That'd be my recommendation for him.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come before city council this evening? We've got a presentation is what we still have to do. Go right ahead, Sam.
Okay. As you know, every two years, we do a citizen survey of perception of services in the community. Generates survey results that have a 95% confidence interval. These are posted to our website, www.cityofcartersville.org. Point out to you the different colored bars in these. This deals with safety, mobility, natural environment. The different colored bars are where we rank lower than the norm compared with other cities. Those are travel by bicycle, travel by public transportation, and air quality. Those typically get dinged. Those aren't any new thing that we've seen. Next one, the dark-colored bars. These are pieces where we're above relative to built environment, economy, recreation, and wellness. The downtown gets high marks, and new development, Cartersville gets high marks. Those are... We typically see those as well. Aspects of the community. This deal with education enrichment and community engagement. These are all similar to the norm. Nothing outstanding, high or low there. Government aspects, safety and mobility. Again, the one that gets dinged in this one is transit-related. This is bus and transit services, I would guess, because there is a limited service. Next piece, natural environment and built environment. These range anywhere from solid waste recycling, sewer services, code enforcement. The one that we typically see that's below, that's not in this one, is cable TV. That is usually rated below the norm, but it's not in this survey. Next piece, economy, recreation, wellness, education, and enrichment, community engagement. These are government aspects. These are all similar to the norm. Aspects of participation. Again, you can see the transit piece, the transportation piece come out. And one that's a little surprising is recycled at home, is below the norm. Aspects of participation, built environment, economy, recreation, wellness, education, and enrichment. There are three that are above. Those are economy, will have positive impact on income, that work in Cartersville, and participating in the religious or spiritual activities. This is about the last. Aspects of participation, community engagement. These are all similar to the norm. So in summary, we saw below-the-norm marks for air quality and public transit. Downtown, positive about the economy, new development, work in Cartersville, and spiritual participation were all above. And I'll be back with you in another piece next time.
And I know that there's a lot of information. Is all this available on our website?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I thought it was. I just wanted to verify that before I said that.
It's posted.
Confidently. But yeah, there's an awful lot of data there that you can go on and pour over for hours and take a look at all that if you so care to. Again, any other business that needs to come before council this evening, other than happy birthday to Mr. Archer?
Tomorrow.
I know. Our present due tonight is we're not going to send you.
Mayor, I'd like to mention one thing. Fourth of July just went off without a hitch. It was just... The parade was great. I rode after Dillinger and looked at police presence and how the crowds were behaving, and everything was just very positive.
It went off without a hitch, but we did have several departments that were sprung into action with storms and services and just people being people. So we appreciate the hard work so that people do get to enjoy that time away, and we appreciate the sacrifices of those that have to go above and beyond on holidays like that. If there's nothing else, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
To adjourn. Stay gold.